Do the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Maggie seconded it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a motion appointing an acting city administrator. So, um, we brought this up at the last council meeting about having a interim administrator when the city administrator's out of town. And I called Scott Riggs, the city attorney, and, um, he was pretty adamant that it was a good move to, to, uh, make a, uh, to do this. Um, so there is somebody to fill in, um, when the city administrator's out of town for any unforeseen problems, or if a signature has to be done, or something to that effect. We have a second person in the city that can do it. So, um, apparently, um, Scott's been suggesting this for quite some time, and, oh! Speak of the devil, I didn't know you were gonna be here. Sorry. So, anyway. You wanna say anything?
Yeah, I, I can confirm with what the mayor is and agree with what the mayor's saying. I, I've talked to Mike before about this. Um, I, I don't know that Mike has, has been against it in any way, shape, or form. It's just that there's sort of been, uh, the idea of, not sure if there's a need, but there's clearly, right now, you have a need. You have Mike gone a while, um, you will have a break between Mike leaving and the new administrator starting at the end of the month. Um, you know, for all, well, most all other communities I deal with do an annual appointment where there's an acting administrator or acting deputy clerk at the annual meeting. And we, we haven't done that for some reason, I think it's just historical, but I do strongly encourage you to think about doing it, and I think it will, you know, not be needed all that often, but you never know. And it really, I, I did provide you three items that Ken provided in the, in the agenda packet, which, really, the state statute, it's also, uh, language in our, our charter in section 6.01, and then a, a minor blur out of the legal Minnesota City's handbook, where it talks about appointing a deputy clerk, which, in essence, really is what you're doing here. We're calling it administrator, or, or acting administrator, or something along those lines. But under our charter, our city administrator is the city clerk. If you go into Minnesota statutes, there is nowhere, anywhere, that's mentioned that city administrator, the term. It always is city clerk, but most, well, not most. Many cities have utilized the term city administrator for years, either through charter or ordinances adoptions, and we've done it through our charter, obviously. But, um, the highlighted portions really kind of answer the issue of why I'm telling you that this is a good idea. It really is in a situation where there's an absence from the city or disability. That's it. That's all it is. Um, right now, Mike is absent, so you'd have the ability, if you needed it, for signature purposes, and we do have some things that could be signed right now and not wait for Mike's return, that would be advantageous for us, particularly on the litigation matters you discussed recently. So, that's why I'm recommending you do this. So, that's my, my brief explanation.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, Scott. Uh, did you, do you recommend that this is an annual, uh, appointment? Because I think the charter, uh, the wording is that the city administrator recommends the future deputy, but...
The, the charter isn't quite clear in my mind, and it's something maybe we, we look at as the charter moves forward with its next meeting, but the state statute isn't either. Um, I've always said that, you know, it's fine for the administrator to make that recommendation, but I believe the council should be the one participating in that. I do have a couple other communities, uh, two of which are bigger, that essentially rotate who they designate another department head annually to be that acting administrator in case there's a need. And that's, that's how they do it. Others just appoint one, uh, some of the smaller communities just appoint somebody, and it's often the same person, whether it's a police chief, or a public works director, or a planning director. It, it, it really is not, I, it doesn't matter. It's just who possibly would be there and available to assist.
Do you feel we should do it annually, then?
Yeah, I think that's fine, because then you can reevaluate it. Uh, so I, I, I don't know that you need to do it long-term and say, we're doing it, and, you know, putting it away in the drawer and forgetting about it. I think you make it part of your annual appointments that you do at the annual meeting in January.
And then you mentioned this before, but, um, the, the, you have a, we have a, we see a part of the charter, but then the, the, um, the legal part is a statutory city, and we're not a statutory city, so I just wonder, should we be calling this a, since it's not in our charter, a deputy clerk?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't feel strongly one way or the other, Bruce, on that. Uh, I think that, and why I said, I think that we should add a sentence to this section 6.01. Um, there are other communities that use the phrase deputy administrator or acting administrator, which I think is a better terminology, uh, but they all accomplish the same thing. And you're right, we're not a statutory city, but we do and are able to utilize all statutes that apply to the city if they're not spoken for in the charter. It's arguable this is not spoken for in the charter at this point in time, and that's why I say that 412.151 does apply.
Okay, that's all I got.
All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, I would, I guess, I would look for a motion. I, my personal, I think Ken has the ability to step in. He's probably worth the closest with Mike, um, on stuff, and has probably, um, the best idea what's going on, on some of this stuff, so I would look for a motion to appoint, um, Ken Andich as acting city administrator.
So moved.
There's been a motion by Sean, seconded by Brick. Any other discussion? None, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And thanks, Ken, for doing that.
Thank you.
For agreeing to do it.
Did you wanna do it?
Yes.
Okay, sir, you're the next up.
All right, so the next item on the agenda, and Mitch, I gotta item all show from my computer here. If you can pu- put that up on there. Zoom in a little bit here for you, better view. So we have another vacation of an easement request, this time for the property at 1418 12th Street Southeast. We have, uh, the owners Sarah and Matt Thompson apply for a partial vacation of what was currently a 20-foot drainage utility easement. So, they are specifically looking to vacate on, if you look on the map, the area that's hatched. That's the north 10 feet of what is currently a 20-foot easement that goes all the way to their rear yard. If you look on the air photo, clearly you can see kind of where this came from. We had, um, a property changing hands, uh, a couple months ago, and when we pulled up the air photo, we found that this pool was put up without a permit, this deck was put up without a permit, and then this sport court was put up without a permit, all within that 20-foot drainage utility easement. Uh, going back into our records with the previous homeowner, we had informed them, no, you cannot put any of these items up, they're all within the easement, and they put them up anyway. So, that's kind of the history on the property. Uh, these new owners came into it, we're not aware of that, and, um, when we discovered the issues, we obviously, uh, made them remove the deck, uh, at that time. And then, um, we had to talk about the need for this easement being the full 20 feet. Uh, myself, Matt Rinda, and Chris Cavett took a look at this property in particular and tried to figure out why there was a 20-foot easement, uh, from the rear lot line, um, in this area. We don't really know why it was 20 feet. Um, there's actually a storm sewer line that comes from the, uh, west towards the east, and then it actually, um, heads in a northbound fashion along the west lot line of this property. Uh, but we don't have any additional infrastructure under the ground. There's actually no utilities under the ground here. Um, and typically, we just maintain a 10-foot just for overland drainage, and, um, that would be the same case, uh, that we'd be looking for here. So, with the vacation requests they're making, it would allow them to keep their above-ground pool, um, which they have applied for the permit for now, um, but it cannot be obviously placed in this area until that vacation of this 10-foot, uh, portion of the 20-foot easement is vacated. Now, it still leaves the question of the, uh, sport court area here. Um, still working with the property owner on that. I think we can, uh, have them basically saw cut the court and remove that area from the easement. Um, the issue we had is if anything's left in there, that was kind of a permanent structure, like the concrete, it would cause an issue where we need to get in for access to do utility work. Very likely on this pipe and structure on, uh, the west side of the lot, we may need to enter from, you know, that side of the property. And then, obviously, into the future, this is gonna be a mid-block, um, lot, and it will not be adjacent to a farm field, so it's even more important that we have, uh, unrestricted access to that, that rear lot line to get to that storm sewer. So, um, at this point, we are recommending that the easement be reduced to that, um, 10-foot, uh, which matches what you've got on the Takowski Acres plot to the south, and really just gets rid of an extraneous, um, portion of the easement that we have on this property. Again, don't really have the history of why it was made bigger, um, in this particular lot, but it was. And, um, I do wanna point out, I don't have the letter in the packet, but, um, Centerpoint Energy also concurs that they do not have any utilities in here, and nor does any other utility company, but they did submit a letter on Friday, uh, confirming that they are okay with the partial vacation, this easement as well. So I think with that, we do require a public hearing, uh, for tonight's meeting, and we could go ahead and open that up, unless you have any questions before we do that.
Just one, I got, um, what's stopping the neighbors from coming in and getting one tomorrow?
Vacating their portion easement?
Yep.
Nothing, at this point. Uh, we're not typically in a position, we get these requests, we only will typically do that when we're getting requested to do that. Um, the excess easement generally isn't hurting the property owner, nor is it, you know, providing us any benefit that we don't need, but when we come across these situations where they're trying to utilize their lot more fully, and we can't find a reason to keep the larger easement, that's why we, we bring them forward and, um, suggest that they, they get vacated, so, yeah, the, the other neighbor...
There's no litigation on this from the realtor or the prior owner?
There may be, I don't know about that end of it, but we were not involved in that. That was between the property owner previous and then the new owner here. We got involved just from a standpoint of during title work, and obviously, we found that we didn't have a permit for the pool, we didn't have a permit for the deck or the sport court. So, unfortunately, the current property owner kind of got stuck with it, but that's between them, their title company, and, and the realtor, so...
Okay, I'll open the public hearing, um, in regards to this, um, vacation. Anybody wanna speak? Is there anybody that wants to speak to this? Anyone that wants to speak? Hearing no, no, uh, no one, um, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, Rick and Bruce, um, to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have the adoption of the ordinance number 323, vacating a portion of the certain drainage and utility easement in the Platte Prague Estates.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, Rick and Bruce, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, you're welcome. Uh, number three, um, Terry, I'm sorry, Terry, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, um, this eve- uh, this evening, I'm pleased to res- uh, report the results of your sale that occurred at 11:30 at our offices this morning. And the offer was a $5,925,000 bond issue for the road improvements for, I think everyone who's come to New Prague knows what this project is for. Very big detour getting here to the meeting always, um, but excited to see all the progress out there. The offering, um, up to, you know, you received a lot of interest in this bond. There is a, um, low supply right now, and a lot of interested bid, bidders. Um, so you receive, there is a bid tabulation, I'm not sure if Patty, did you hand this off? Okay, so there should be a bid tabulation, um, so you can see these, the results as well as I read through them. Um, you received seven bids, and that's a lot, and especially since some of them were syndicate bids, and so you had multiple, for example, on the Baird, you see all of the financial institutions that are part of that bid, and so there were 38 financial institutions around the nation who were participating in this, this bid. But the best results of all, you can have a lot of bidders, and if they don't give you good rates, that doesn't help. So, the good news is, uh, the low bid came from Robert Baird Incorporated, and the bid was an interest rate of 1.16%. Um, I don't know about you, but I've sold a lot of bonds in the 3% to 5% range in my career, and I was really nervous. Um, a month ago, we, um, projected an interest rate based on, you know, a little cushion, maybe 10, 20 basis points, expecting rates maybe to go up. So we projected a rate of 1.465. And so, of course, this is about 30 basis points less than that. And, um, based on rough estimates, it's about $150,000 less in interest than that. But really, you know, we're less than 3% is what I'm, we've seen a lot of bonds, so the savings, um, this, this year, being able to issue bonds is, is providing a tremendous amount of interest savings, um, to you. Uh, the other thing is, we received a premium bid, meaning there's a price that they pay, and they have coupon bids, and as a result of that, we're able to apply the premium, uh, that we received, um, some of the premium to the par amount of the bonds. What happens is, they will bid, you know, the low bid is awarded based on, every maturity of bonds has a coupon interest rate. They bid that, and then they also, and you'll see, you'll see some of the interest rates that they are offering, that some of them are over 5%, you'll see that. We buy down that yield so that they average the 1.16 using the price that they pay for the premium. And so because of that, the bond issue size will not be 5,925,000, it'll be 5,465,000, because we apply that premium to the par, so that you'll still end up paying interest rates in the range of 1.16 instead of the 5 that you see, and that's how it gets buffered. And so, that's the other good news, is on your books, you're only gonna show data 4 million, 5,465,000. The last piece of, um, I think fabulous news is the credit rating. You know, maintaining a double A rating is a very secure, um, e- uh, investment for people who are worried about what may or may not happening, and that happened in the stock market, and all part of why you, um, are receiving the bids of 1.168. Because the likelihood of repayment, that's a measure, you know, the higher your credit rating, the more likely it is that the investors are gonna receive the repayment on their bonds. So AAA is the highest, and then a double A plus, and then double A. So you're very close to the very high notches, and when they see a double A rating, that's a lot of, um, security there. And so just to mention a few things from your credit rating, if I could, Mr. Mayor, the, um, they talk about good, um, consistence, well, first of all, start with strong economic metrics, they support your access to the Twin Cities, um, and that you have continuous development, um, that, that is seen, and there were several items in the your POS talking about expansion and some growth. They talk about good financial management policies that produce consistently strong finances. They talk about some of the practices in here, the three years of historical data that you use when you develop, the quarterly budget to actual updates that go all the way to the city council, the, um, capital planning that has a 10-year plan, uh, for the city at large, cash management, investment colis- policies that they, they feel provide a lot of, um, good management poss- um, processes. Uh, debt management policy and fund balance policy that you have, maintaining at least 50% of next year's general fund expenditures, all given very high marks. The consistent budgetary performance, that you're always coming in well with your budgets. They do note a weak debt profile, and that's just been something that's been here for years, and it's, it's measures that they're doing across the whole country, and in Minnesota, uh, there are a lot of communities that have a weak debt profile, we've talked about that, and it's offset by the amount of cash that we have. So the cash is higher because you don't get your first tax levy until June, uh, but you also have, um, a higher debt amount typically, because we maintain the infrastructure higher in Minnesota. And also, if you're a community that's on the fringes of the men- metro area, you're building for the expansion that is still coming. So, in the life cycle of cities, we see that. A manageable, manageable pension and other post-employment benefits are quoted, that you're in the ranges on all of that as well. And they talk about the rapid retirement of your debt, which is also a plus. So I think it's a really great report card. It speaks to, you know, the direction from the city council to the management of the staff, and it is all reflected in that very low interest rate today of 1.16%. So we wanna congratulate you and the city, and, uh, to say what a great remarkable job that your staff did on the rating call representing the city, that's all part of, factored into the rating. And, uh, so tonight, congratulations to you and your staff, and we certainly do gladly recommend the low bid, um, from Baird at 1.16, and encourage you to adopt the resolution. Happy to answer any questions you may have. All good news. I don't have any questions.
Any questions from the council? Otherwise, I would take a motion to adopt the resolution that's been presented.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 21080201, awarding the sale of General Obligation Bond Series to 2020A in the original aggregate principal amount of 5,465,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Maggie, seconded by Sean. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, Matt, uh, reconstruction project update.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, um, Chris Cavett's not out of town, so I'm gonna take this one for him, but just wanted to give you a little update, um... That was dramatic. Uh, just a little update on Main Street. Obviously, if any of you has been down there, I know, Mayor, I talked to you today down there, uh, there's a lot going on. So, starting last week, road closure extended all the way to east of 7th Avenue Southeast. So that is pretty much, that is the end of the project. Uh, they did all the removals of all the blacktop curb, uh, last week. This week, they're gonna be working on storm pipe, uh, from Pershing to Lexington. They should have that finished by Thursday, is the plans, and then they're gonna switch over to, um, sanitary, uh, from Lindale to 7th Avenue. After that's complete, hopefully, that should be towards the end of the week, maybe Monday next week, uh, they'll be doing water main and, uh, services next week. And then, they hope to wrap up all pipe work by the August 16th, that week. So, they're moving along. Pipe work's going really smooth, uh, they had a couple, they had two crews in last week, um, instead of the, just the one pipe crew, so they got a lot of work, a lot of pipe in the ground. Light bases this week are being installed, um, they have been doing that, they started last week already, but, uh, light bases, and then they're also putting the conduit and pulling wire. That should be finished up this week. Uh, sidewalks from 2nd Avenue Southwest all the way to 1st Avenue Northeast, uh, on the east side, that'd be the east side of New Prague Times, um, that'd be the first roundabout there. They should have, uh, majority of those sidewalks done by the end of next week. Almost the whole south side's done, besides a few little spots, um, uh, the aprons behind the, uh, curbs that are left on the north side, but for the most part, the north side is complete. Um, that should cover it, unless you guys got a few questions?
I'll wait, I'll ask afterwards.
I was saying, I'm waiting, Sean, I know it's coming. I can see the look.
No. I, I may as well. I, I just noticed that, uh, Humble Pie, where the ramp goes up, their door actually swings open, and, you know, there's a railing there. So, anybody using that ramp to get up there wouldn't be able to get in.
The ramp's on the east side?
Uh, it is on the, uh, east side, yes. So it goes up, and then if the person using that ramp were to open the door, there's no room for them to maneuver in and get into the...
I will take a look at that, I don't know that, I thought, I'll take a look at it.
So, and I don't know if the door needs to be cha- you know, obviously, the door will have to be changed, 'cause then, and, and it's not, the other side has the stairs to it, so...
Yeah, the west side has the stairs on it, you're correct.
Yeah, so that's, it's, uh, it blocks the...
It's opposite, or would be opposite.
Yeah, I don't, and, I guess my point is, is that if, if that door needs to be changed, so it opens the other way...
We met with the owner of Humble Pie about three months ago, 'cause we redesigned that whole, 'cause they wanted a stairway on one end, ramp on the other.
Yep.
I'm almost positive he said he's replacing the door, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna say that for sure, but, I mean, that was, we looked at that two, three months ago. I would have to look into it for surely to give you an exact answer, but if something tells me that, that door is being switched or something, I believe we would never have a door swing into the ramp.
Right.
Let me look into it, and I can get back to you on it.
Okay, thanks.
If you, and if that is the case, if he is gonna have to work on the door, does that make it a remodel or a, an improvement, so he's gotta, they gotta go ADA throughout the whole building then?
Ken, do you know that answer?
I will, uh, talk to Chad Lunder about that, and, uh, get you an answer on that, Rick. Yeah, I don't know offhand. If that's an, I think there's typically a dollar amount that's involved to be considered a remodel. Um, and, as it relates to the value of the building, but I'll, I'll verify that.
So that, the city wouldn't incur any cost for that? It's, the building owner's gonna...
That'd be the building owner, yep.
Okay. Anything else, Matt?
Nope, that's all I got.
Okay. I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Bruce, seconded by Rick. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion care- or, opposed, motion carries. All right. Anything else? Rick, do you have anything?
No.
Bruce?
I, I wanted to ask, uh, maybe Ken can answer, or I think that discussion about trees and ash trees have been discussed in the past. I don't recall what the city's strategy with dealing with ash trees, but now, I, now I'm hearing that the ash borer is closer to town recently, so, um, I'm trying to recall. Someone asked me about it, what, what is our strategy in dealing with ash trees, or do we have one?
So, that might be a better question for Matt, actually.
Okay.
So...
But that's a, you're doing a great job of deputy clerk.
So yes, ash borers has been spotted in Prairie Lake, that's probably almost five, six years ago. Jim Caligari in the parks, uh, he has always been our guy that we, um, we send to classes to, uh, deal with ash board, and he's trained in on how to, what to look for. Um, we have had residents probably roughly five to 10 a summer that will call us to ask us to look at a tree. Uh, we have not spotted anything in New Prague, um, so we are actively looking, checking trees out throughout Memorial Park. Uh, Memorial Park has ash trees everywhere. I mean, Memorial Park is pretty much all ash trees. Uh, we have replaced trees in the last seven years to kind of prepare for the worst.
And you've had money in the annual budget for the Parks Department to do that as well?
Yep.
But there's no strategy to treat certain ones to make them last longer, or anything like that?
We are not treating any right now, because we don't actively have any, but, yeah, that would be an option that we would be looking at, for sure.
I'm, I just, I didn't understand that, so...
We, we don't have any in town right now that have, that we know of that has, have ash boards, so they're, nothing's being treated, but once...
You have to treat them, hopefully, before you get the ash borer, but...
It's right at the very beginning stages of it, usually.
Yeah, if you can catch at that soon, otherwise...
Yep.
You could be treating them now, as an example.
There is nothing that's being treated as of right now.
Right.
I guess I'm wondering, should we be treating some of them that we wanna try to keep?
Well, is it a preventive treatment, or is it, once the ash borer, you see signals of it, then you kill the ash borer at that point?
I think it's a preventative, and if it's already dead, you can't get it back, that part, as I understand it, but...
Of the tree, okay.
But you can probably save the rest of it, once you have it. But you can probably save the rest of it once you have it, but-
We check our, Jim in the parks, he goes through Memorial Park because that's where the majority of it is. We check our trees. I'm not, I don't want to say once every couple of months, just to look for signs on the bark is where we usually are looking for them, to see any signs if there is anything, but we have not seen anything. My bet would be the yes, it is here. If it's been in Prairie Lake for the last five, six years, it's probably a new preg. We just have not seen it.
Yeah, and that's why I'm wondering if there's particular trees that we think were, really want to save, we should probably be treating them already at least, but I don't know if we have, if that's been discussed, but-
It has not been discussed, but I can get some dollar amounts and figure out what the cost would be.
I guess, I, I, I don't know, since we're talking about park properties, probably in the domain of the park board if they want.
Yeah, and that would be a-
And I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just thinking if we have particular trees that are going to be, if we want to save them, because once it come, once it comes in the level, it's pretty much going to get most of them at one time. But if you do treat some of them, you might be able to save some longer.
So Ken, can you put that on our agenda for the park board? We actually have an arborist on our park board.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be great because, and I don't know if, if there's a strategy to start cutting down and you're, did you say you're replacing some as we go here?
We planted more trees out there anticipating that we're going to lose some trees.
What do we?
On Main Street, there has been, I want to say six or seven between the library and the Memorial Park entrance that we planted probably about five years ago in between the ash trees anticipating that we might lose them.
Okay. Another strategy might be to actually take them down, even if they're not, to already start replacing them on a staggered basis so you don't have, you know, all small trees at the same time.
Two weeks ago, two weeks ago in front of the library, east of the library, we took down three ash trees that were dying. They did not have ash bore. They had zero signs of it, but we took them down because this is the right time to do it. There, a lot of them, two of them were overhanging the new Veterans Memorial.
Yep.
And that wasn't obviously a chance we were willing to take. And then there was one right in front of the library that we took down.
Yeah.
But again, there were no signs of anything.
I think it'd be fantastic for the park board kind of discusses that to see if there's a timeline to take some down strategically or we want to save this one as long as we possibly can, spend the money on treating some of those if we want to, but-
Yeah, I think it'd be a good discussion for us to have and we do have at least some subject matter experts to bounce ideas.
And I understood, I'm not sure it's a law, but I understood if you have it, if you have a professional tree trimmer taking a tree down, they have to report it.
That it has ash, ash bore, yes.
If it has it.
Yep.
So you would know if you, whatever that state site is, but I don't know. I had heard that it's closer somewhere between Prairie Lake and New Prague as there've been some reported and so.
Yep. Uh, like I said, Jim goes once a year for his updated classing, but classes, but I'll definitely talk to him and kind of get his information on where he's finding it, where they're reporting it. And then again, just maybe get a dollar amount on what other cities are looking at on treating their trees to pass on to Ken for the park board and everything.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be nice to know if there's something closer in Prairie Lake that's been reported.
Yeah, again, this was early summer when I talked to Jim about it and that's the closest they had. And again, we hired somebody from Prairie Lake that they were treating a lot of their trees there. So we have a lot of avenues is what I'm saying that I can get some ideas from and I'll talk to them this week.
I would imagine it'd be very expensive to treat all of our ash trees, but like I said, maybe there's a strategy to protect some of them longer.
Yeah, and one thing Jim Caligari and I have looked at in the past probably five-plus years ago now is that funding from the Minnesota Department of Ag, I believe it was, that had Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan grant available.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if they still have that. We did, we did apply for it and we did not get any at that time.
I think that was, I didn't, that was in the league newsletter.
Yeah.
So they talked about that. I don't remember what it said.
Yep, so I know one of the things we had to do is actually inventory our trees and we do have a program to do that and it's just been difficult, obviously, getting the time to do that. Winter is going to be a good time to do that. So that was really step number one. And we're hoping, once we get that inventory done, then we can, you know, move into that stage of putting together a plan and hopefully applying to get a grant to help somebody come in to write that for us. And then I think that would lead into helping as well, who can, or which trees should you look at keeping, the treatment costs and that type of thing. So we'll talk about it at park board though. Again, it's been a few years.
Where, what are those trees? I, I'm not a tree person. At least I can't tell what they are, but were they right by the old, by the playground equipment in Memorial Park? Were those two at, were those two taken down ash trees? Those big ones?
Yes. Pretty much all the trees that line between, right on Main Street are ash trees, yes.
And going into the park?
Yeah.
On the right.
Ninety percent of Memorial Park is ash trees.
Okay. Yeah, to me, I think it'd be nice to save a couple of them longer if they all get decimated in a, in a one-year time period or something. That's all I have.
Okay. I have been contacted by a, a group here in town that's collecting signatures for a petition for a new post office. I don't know if you've picked up on that with letters to the editor and stuff like that. They're going to have a booth at checkout New Prague collecting signatures and they called me. You guys will probably get letters from them because they're going to be writing local and the senators and congressmen and stuff. But this group feels that New Prague needs a new post office. I would probably have to agree with them because that's been that post office since I can remember in that same spot and, and I know there's a moratorium and all kinds of stuff, so I'm willing to stick my nose into it and learn how that whole process works or, because I know the postal service rents their buildings. I don't know any more than that. So just wanted to update you guys on that.
Thank you.
One question for you on that one too, Dwayne. At one time, we were talking about building a fifty-five and older and possibly putting a new city hall in.
Yeah.
So that's kind of on the list and this building would be a perfect building for a post office. You know, you got the docking areas, you got everything. So I-
But yeah, and yeah, and it's, it's really in its infancy. I have no clue what they would require or anything. I would imagine the city's going to have to give some support someplace. But we'll have to figure it out. But that's, that's a little update. Did you have something?
I didn't.
I had something different, but-
No, no, I thought I heard somebody over here. So go ahead.
Matt, the street signs on the west side of Tenth Avenue are really faded. You can't even see them if you're heading to the north from like County Road twenty-nine there.
Okay.
Is there, and I noticed that there's some other ones that are pretty faded too. Do we have a program in place to-
He ordered, Public Works ordered two weeks ago a bunch of street signs.
Oh, he did, okay.
So we go through all the, pretty much every street once a year and make a list of, again, the worst and kind of trickle down because we put money away to replace street signs every year.
Okay.
So, yes, Tenth, I know Tenth Avenue, like out by Tekolski, is that where you're-
Yeah, right, right.
A lot, I, he, I saw the PO that I signed off on, a lot of those were out there, or a lot of those were on his list.
Oh, they were, okay.
So.
Yeah, you can't even read the street names.
Yep.
So, okay. All right, great, thank you.
So that should be done hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
Perfect. That was it.
Mike?
I forgot though. Are we locked and loaded for that date, then Wednesday, August?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay.
Yes.
So that's finalized date.
And it was five-thirty, right?
Five-thirty, yeah.
Maggie, go ahead.
I didn't have anything.
Oh, you didn't. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm Ken.
Uh, nothing more.
Patty? Jim? Matt?
Nothing.
Patrick? Okay. Okay, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.